Are you set?
We're set.
Excellent, we're starting on time.
Chris is muted and so I don't know if he can hear.
Can you hear me now? I can hear.
Yeah, Chris is good. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I'm gonna read the statement for remote participation pursuant to Section 7E of Open Meetings Act on Agenda pursuant to Section 7E of the Open Meetings Act. I as President of the McHenry County Conservation District have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time because of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Pritzker's related disaster declaration. I have further determined that the physical presence of an employee or member of the public body at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the disaster described in the Governor's declaration. With that being said, I will ask everyone to follow me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Hey, thank you. Could I have the introductory roll call, please?
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Brand?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Dom?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Hunning?
Here. All present? Thank you. Linda, could you read, could you lead us in the conservation ethic, please?
Um, yeah. So I have to figure out how to get these people off the side of my thing so I can see the whole thing. How do I do that?
You go back, do you have participants? Did you click on that?
There's a screen split, so you just move it back.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna go for it. Goal numbers, conservation ethic, goal number six, to foster, foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsible for the total community of life. Is that right? I can't see that other.
You're, you're good so far.
A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty, become educated about conservation issues, and then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open spaces. Goal number two, to acquire and maintain other wildland scenic areas and operational, operate, I can't see that one.
Open.
Open, huh, spaces for conservation purposes and for educational and recreational use.
Very good. Alright, and I have Pat, could you read the Conservation Stewardship pledge, please?
Sure. I guess I'm on. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully develop cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number 12, we will empower you to conserve our water, wildlife, and way of life here in McHenry County by actively seeking your input and support.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Also move.
My second.
Dave and Pat, thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Hunning?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, we can move forward with the agenda. First up is our distinguished Budget Presentation Award Day. And I believe this is the first year we've, we've attempted for this award, is that correct?
That is correct, it is.
So, well, you wanna tell us a little bit about the award and what you went through and, and what goes into that?
Um, well, I guess the key is that it's basically saying the district's budget has all the detail that needs to accurately define and communicate, you know, the important aspects of the district's finances. This laid out in a objective and kinda easily to understand way, believe it or not. And it's something we've really been working on for many years. I think the first model that I used when I created the budget after being here for a couple of years was an award-winning budget model. So then, you know, as time allowed, we've added some of the key pieces to it. I'll say, you know, a couple of things. A lot of work goes into it outside of my own. You know, first would be our, my accounting team of two, Jean and Linda, without them, we wouldn't really be able to do what we do. Both directly affecting the budget as well as all the back office things that they handle, so I don't have to worry about them. But all the managers obviously play a key role. They, they have a lot of input. They actually, as you can see, as you look through it, generate a lot of the information for it. And then I'll say this year especially, I didn't think we were gonna get it probably for another year or two. But Elizabeth made the final push, so she, when she knew we were close, she took it upon herself to look for those areas that we're still lacking and, and made sure we put them in. A lot of the strategic plan information is new for the fiscal year 21 budget, and some of the operational goals and the narrative within there. So that was, I, I was kind of 50/50 on this first, and I was really looking just to get the guidance for what we would need to do to correct it, to get it in the next 22 cycle, maybe the 23 cycle. But thanks to her final push, that really helped get us over the top. So it's a great reflection on the entire district.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Great to everybody, so.
I do have a question, did that press release go out? I haven't seen it in the Herald.
I, I don't know for sure.
Wendy, do you know?
No, a press release has not gone out yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, congratulations to everyone, that, that's great. I know there's a lot of work that goes into it and, and it's nice to be, be recognized for the work that goes into any, any project or any endeavor. So, thank you very much, guys.
I second that.
So, okay, and then and then next, we're going to go to use a force certification. And I read that, but is Chief King here to talk about that?
I don't see her.
She, she is not, but I can. I spoke with her earlier, yes, I spoke with her earlier today about it. The, the, she's, she's got the department going through a cert, a an accreditation, and because of that, she basically had all of the core items already lined up. She said basically it's, it's based on having the proper training, having the proper policies, and having the proper, oh, and actually having a, a history of the proper use of force. I mean, that's, it's, it's in our past as well, so. She said we had all the components, she just had to submit them. The one thing that she did do was submitted very early, as soon as she saw this come out. And therefore, we were in the first wave of it, and now she said there's a tremendous backlog, and all of those things have to be approved by January 1, I think. So, to get it done early was, was the key.
Well, thank her and the team for us, please.
Yeah, we'll certainly do that.
It looked like she got it within a month of that coming out. So that was very quick turnaround.
Yeah, and she reiterated to me today, it was because, because the district had several components already in place. I think they were things that she put in place, a new training system, you know, etc., that was able, we were able to quick, very quickly grab the information and submit it. That's one of the things she said with speed was, was, was important on this one.
That's great.
Well, congratulations to everybody there also, so, yeah, things are going well. Alright, with that, we'll move forward to our DEI presentation. Jackie, are you up and running?
Yes, I'm here. I will
Great.
share my screen. Alright, you're seeing the presentation now?
Yep.
Awesome. So, hello, everybody. I am Jackie Bureau, the Volunteer Coordinator for Natural Resources, and I am leading our DEI committee. Several of our members are also in attendance tonight. So diversity means so much more than rights. This includes disability, which is more than just people in wheelchairs. We're talking hearing loss, blindness, autism, Down Syndrome, other mental health, and people with the disability are actually our largest minority group. We're also talking about gender, sexual orientation, religion, and even just a diversity of ideas. We are all coming at conservation from different perspectives, and all of those are valuable perspectives. Where if we think of it as an organization, diversity of ideas is the talent of the organization. So if we work on a project like a wetland mitigation, we intuitively know that it's important to have the perspectives of a botanist, a wildlife biologist, a water quality scientist, and a land manager, because they're all coming from different experiences. And those perspectives allow them to ask questions and propose solutions that make the project stronger overall. So let's get on the same page first. With hiring, we are a talent-first organization. We believe our staff is highly qualified and we want to keep their talent. It's a really great sign that they stay with us for a long time, because that means they're happy here. That's not something we want to change. But we do expect regular turnover with things like retirements, seasonals, and interns. And when the time comes to hire, we are going to hire the most qualified individuals. And we believe that DEI leads to top talent being attracted to our organization, and there's quite a bit of evidence to support that, talk about later. We believe our public programming should be inclusive of everybody. We already talked about diversity, but these other terms might be newer for you. Inclusion is really the end goal. We want to have an environment where we are actively celebrating and leveraging our differences. And equity is how we get there in terms of our policies and our programs. So we don't wanna just do something that sounds good on paper, like equality. That can, treating people the same can actually result in disadvantages to certain groups depending on their backgrounds still. So what we do and how we do it is really important. Because of what we see in the media, we're kind of conditioned to think that DEI is a new idea, or that it's super political or polarized, but that's actually not true. There is a significant legal precedent for DEI going all the way back to 1870. We're celebrating hundreds of women having the right to vote in 30 years of the Americans with Disabilities Act. We are federally mandated to include the results of the Civil Rights Act in our personnel policy, which states that it's the responsibility of each and every employee. So anti-discrimination is something that we have done as training previously. We're just taking a new approach to it by bringing in some new information. Back in 2017, the staff that were working on our strategic plan thought it was important to include that we were reflective of our community demographics. And in our current strategic plan, we expanded on that a little bit to say we want to attract and retain a diverse and talented team, again, our top talent, as represented in the community. There are a lot of studies out there, multiple and varied studies, that show DEI results in saving money and increases in revenue in both the public and private sectors. One example, a Columbia University study showed that female representation in top management led to a $42 million increase in firm value. Another study looked at multiple organizations, and the more diverse management teams had 19% higher revenues, which they attributed to innovation from having different ideas and people proposing solutions to complex problems. Another study looked at 400 different companies, or more like 460 or so, and they found that gender and racial diversity were statistically significant predictors of increased revenue. And the ones that were rated as high diversity had 15 times the revenue of ones that were rated as low diversity. And even those studies that didn't find benefits for diversity found there was no negative financial impact. And they said that they didn't measure it specifically, but they noted improvements in work culture that benefited everyone. Diversity increases innovation. A study of 1.5 million scientific papers showed that if a paper was authored by a group of diverse authors, it was cited more often by other papers, and it was rated as having a higher impact factor than papers that had authors of the same ethnicity. In the next five years, 75% of our global workforce will be millennials, and half of us are actively looking for a company that supports DEI, which is a much higher percentage than previous generations. So if we want to remain a competitive workplace and truly attract top talent to our organization, we need to incorporate DEI. DEI is becoming a very common grant requirement. This isn't just for diversity initiatives. We're talking about funding for conservation and land management in general. They're starting to incorporate an extra forms with DEI questions in the grant application process. They want evidence that we're taking action on an organizational change for creating cross-cultural understanding. Many of them are pulling out these exact terms, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And DEI will become a cost of doing business in the future. In our recent grant applications, we've already been asked to provide a DEI statement and show evidence of policies, practices, and programs that incorporate DEI. We have been asked to provide evidence of the demographics of our community versus the composition of our staff and board, and are we reflective of that? So as a policy, we do not discriminate or gear roles to certain types of people. So why do we have these outcomes? When we look at our staff versus our applicants and our surrounding community, some things stand out here. For example, our applicants are getting a much higher percentage of females than we are actually having on staff. Likewise, with our race and ethnicity categories here, one-fifth of the surrounding population in McHenry County is non-white. And we're actually getting some diversity in our applications, although there's still less than the surrounding community. But although we don't have the numbers filled in for this without a self-reporting survey, it's not a surprise that many of the faces we see are pretty similar. This is just a pattern, so that doesn't get at the cause of what's behind these numbers. So one of the ideas that was brought up was are we seeing change, but we just have staff that stay here a long time because they like it? Which could result in a delay to the, and that's possible, we don't know yet. So we took a snapshot of 2020 seasonal staff for pre-COVID offers to new hires. And because we're not intentionally discriminating, we would expect, just looking at gender as an example, that the percentage of applicants that were female and male would be pretty similar in the hired category. So what we're seeing for 2020 is there's over 20% fewer females actually hired than there are applying for positions. So again, this is just a pattern. We don't know what the cause is, and we need, just need to be prompted to ask further questions. Is this a fluke, or is this a pattern over multiple years? Is this happening across multiple departments? So we decided to break this down a little bit further and look at our departments. So overall, for LPNR, we're still getting more female applicants than we're hiring. If we break that down into our plant and wildlife seasonals, we have this interesting pattern here, where 100% of the people we hire are female, so that's just prompting us to ask, is that a pattern? What's going on here? For field staff positions, we have heard the common stereotype that women aren't applying for positions that have a lot of manual labor, and we're still actually seeing 65% of our applicants in LPNR and 30% of our applicants for sites and fleets. So that's enough to dispel the theory that women aren't applying. And we're hiring them still at a lower percentage than how they're applying. It appears to be pretty representative for the education snapshot here. And again, this is just a starting point. Is this a pattern over multiple years? Is this happening in leadership positions? And is this happening in other demographic groups? And most importantly, what's causing these patterns, and how do we propose solutions? So when we start to do that, it gets really, really complicated, and that's why we need a consultant. It's kind of like having a New Year's resolution where we know intuitively that saying we want to get healthier, eat well, is good for us. It'll improve our quality of life, but we don't know how to get started. And so we hire a personal trainer, so in this case, a consultant, that can get us started, and they can give us tools and exercises that enable us to do this on our own long-term. We have a committee of people specifically excited to work on DEI, and we're planning to have most of the work be ourselves doing it internally, long-term. But $12,000 will get us the startup costs of having a consultant help us out. So that includes an initial DEI organizational assessment. That is a one-time cost, where we would do some kind of feedback survey that could be just of staff, that could also include community members or volunteers. Depending on the consultant, there's a variety of workshops available. It's also dependent upon what our needs are identified in our initial assessment. And the pricing for workshops is usually à la carte. They also incorporate this strategy design phase where that's where we define what our measurable goals are and how we determine our success. So that is also a one-time cost. We included some funding for additional consultant time in case we need it for a specific project, their guidance on something in particular. And if we don't use it for that, we can put it towards outreach with public education events or volunteer programs. Long-term, like I said, the committee is hoping to work on this ourselves. Depending on the consultant, additional workshops may be recommended. We intend to also apply for grants to help and supplement our efforts in this area. So with that, we'll take any questions.
I think you did a good, I read the document that was in our packet, was excellently done, so congratulations to anybody who had a part in that.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Dave? Do you have any questions?
No, I, I thought it was very revealing, and I am still in favor of keeping it in the budget.
Anyone else with any questions?
I don't have so much a question as I would just comment. First, I'd like to commend Jackie and the other volunteers. Because I guess they all have other responsibilities, and they've taken this on. And we can probably, as an institution, benefit from it. I would say that when you use charts and graphs and you try to draw conclusions, statistics can sometimes be hard to interpret. So if you have a sample size of three people and you divide them into two categories and you graph that difference, it's perhaps gonna be pretty striking. But the difference may not really be a significant difference. In other words, whether the result is one-third or two-thirds, it's within what you would call standard deviation. And even though it looks very large on a graph, it's, your numbers are not high enough. Now, if you had 1,000 and you had that difference of one-third and two-thirds, that would perhaps draw some significance. Beyond that sort of nitpicking, and perhaps this isn't context because we're not voting on the budget issue. It seems to me that all of the departments have a stake in this. And the question is, can they find monies in their budget to cover their share of this expense? Or is there a sense that there are other monies that we should draw on? I, I throw that out as as just a consideration.
Reading the budget.
Finally, the last point is this. Let's finish. We have resources in our organization, the Illinois Department of Parks and whatever. They're having a seminar at the end of the month, a three-day seminar. Three or four of the items on the agenda relate to this topic. It would, I I wonder whether that organization can provide the resources for this at less cost. Thank you.
Hey, Dave, you had a, you had, you wanted to speak?
No, but I think this is coming out of the administration budget. Is that not right, Elizabeth?
That is correct. That's why I have it budgeted. Because it goes with the entire organization.
Okay, so that's your comment, Dave. I had a couple, I had a couple of questions. Jackie, when you talk about evidence for grants, what kind of evidence are they looking for?
Um, I mean, they want to see, for example, our composition. So like our demographic numbers, like I showed the chart of what our staff or applicants in our county. They want examples of what are the policies and programs we're putting into place to deal with incorporating DEI. They want to see that we have a diversity, equity, and inclusion statement. Things like that.
A giant to follow up in the comments in the document, Shawna said it's a very common question when she's trying to get funding, and some of the questions they ask is not just your statement, but describe any internal and external effort that you're putting toward it. Describe how your organization is implementing any of those efforts. So that's pretty specific.
Right, okay. And then as to the comments on, I, I get where Bill was going with numbers. I refer to Megan's job because, how many, Elizabeth, how many applicants did we have for Megan's job?
Gosh, Jenny, help me out here. We had quite a few. I don't know the total off my head.
We might have been up to 100, but we had, yeah, we had a lot.
So, so, so if we hired, so we hired one out of 100, would you say 80 to 90% of those were women? That applied?
Probably. Women.
So I mean, so it would, it would show that we turned, that we didn't hire a vast number of women in that, in that particular job. And we didn't hire any of the men. We only hired one out of 80 that applied, or 90, or whatever the number would be, so that and I'm just using that as an example. One job can really can really skew numbers with a few numbers that we have.
Right, then we're just at a starting point. We would need to look at, you know, is this a pattern occurring across departments? Or is it happening multiple years? Is this leadership positions, is something else outside our control happening? And is there, are we doing anything that could unintentionally like gear a role to be for a particular type of person? How can we reduce our bias so we're really only hiring someone based on their skills? Like, one of the things we're looking at Like, one of the things we're looking at is how do we remove a name from a resume? So you're really only looking at their skills and there's no implicit bias from, you know, if their name sounds like it's from a certain culture. There's evidence to show nobody's intending it, but there's two times more likely to get a callback for a resume if you have a white sounding name versus a black sounding name, things like that.
Okay, um, okay, I agree with that. That, that's possible. I think that the fact that you're not finding a pattern is probably a good thing because you're not, you're not finding a pattern system-wide that we're hiring one way or the other. The numbers are small in each, each division. So I, I think the, the fact that you're not finding a pattern is probably positive. But anyway, um, thank you for your report and for the time that all of you have been putting into that.
We, we do have a hand raised.
Yeah, I do want to kind of add in a little bit. I'm not, Jackie, that was very good, very good report. Everyone on the committee put together a very thoughtful presentation. And, and you're getting really good at these Zoom presentations, Jackie. You've done a few of them over the last ten months. This is complicated. We're a small organization and so it's hard to have, start to see patterns when you are dealing with small numbers. And it's not just, you know, actual hiring that's done, but where are some implicit or hidden biases that are, are at play? And those are harder to find. And sometimes when you bring in somebody from the outside who's coming in from it with a neutral position, they can come in and they can find, you know, maybe it's the way certain languages in your policy statements. Maybe it's the way that you interview, you know. It, it can be in, in all different places. And so having that consultant come in and, and identify those with a, a fresh lens, so to speak, can be helpful. When you talk about statistically significant, I agree with you, Bill, that that can get kind of complicated. And, but if something is said to be statistically significant, generally you have to have a number large enough in order to state that. So if somebody's putting together a report and they have that in there, you know, if you can go back and look at, you know, what, what was their sample size? What were they looking at? Generally, that does mean you're looking at a sample size that's large enough so that you can make that determination. I don't know. I think that this is, if we look at the amount of money that we're bringing in in grant money, I mean, if you just purely wanted to look at it from a financial position. I mean, I was just looking at our thing today, you know, under general fund, other income. Why did, why did the actual from, from November 30th, grants were $46,000? You know, so you're talking about if this is, if, if we're not considered because we're not putting policies in place or we haven't shown that we've done our homework. You know, we're, we're actually talking about fairly significant dollars. Should we be deemed not taking this seriously? And so I'm not exactly sure, you know, what that should look like, but you know, you go down to the dedicated funds or, you know, there's more dollars in there. So I don't know. I, I just think that it's something we need to be considering.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you for your report and we'll move along from there. But if anybody has any questions, it looks like anybody on that committee is available and we can have follow-up questions later if we need to. So thank you. Brings us to trustees' report. Anybody, any trustees have anything they would like to report?
Well, as I usually do when I'm reading the WikiWOW, I see things. And apparently the use of the implementation of the hunting app turned out to be a real winner this particular year. So shout out to that. And a shout out to Sergeant Wolf and Officer, oh boy, Butkowski for their help on Grant, on Grange Road, South of Marengo. They talked a suicide guy down. So they did a great job. We saw a letter of thank you from the sheriff. And, oh, I saw on the online auction that everything was sold and we got $18,610. So I think that's just great. Stuff that we can't use, we're selling and we made eighteen-six. So I think that's just great. So shout out to that. That's it.
Good, thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on. Do we have a county board liaison report? Bob there?
Not, I don't see Bob.
Okay, well, as there, we'll have to get ahold of Bob and see if there's some way we can connect with him then. All right, that brings us to president's report. I did talk to Peter Murphy. It's, he's going to send some dates to Elizabeth. Looking like the end of February, the first part of March, more likely the first part of March, which would be good for us, will be through our budget. A lot of our budget process then, and our agenda will be lightening up a little bit. So they're gonna, he's gonna get some dates together. Elizabeth is gonna check her dates to see if she's available on the same ones, then forward them to the rest of the board. And we'll see what dates to, that we can, we can all agree on to. He said it'll take about an hour and a half to two hours. And he'll lead us through a board evaluation and some presentation and we'll, we'll move on from there. So that, that's where that's at right now. So anyone have any comment to that? Okay, if none, we're gonna move on to public comments. First public comment, do we have any public out there that would like to comment?
I don't see anything.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to board business consent agenda. Lynn, would you like to make a motion?
I sure would. All right.
Where you say, Dave?
No, I'm just, you asked to read it again, I just cracked me up.
I, I don't call, I don't call on Linda for any other readings because I save her for this.
I know, I know, I noticed that. I know, all right. So I'm gonna read it. Best off to do it off of your slides there, Elizabeth, probably.
It's the same, so whatever works for you.
Okay, so I'll go ahead with yours because mine's hidden behind some pictures here. All right, so I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the following. Twelve, twelve-point-one approval of minutes. Twelve-point-one A, November nineteen, twenty-twenty committee, the whole. Twelve-point-one B, November nineteen, twenty-twenty regular meeting. Twelve-point-one C, November twenty-four, twenty-twenty special call meeting. Finance and administrative committee. Two-point-one D, October twenty, twenty-twenty executive session. Twelve-point-two treasures report. Twelve-point-two A, acceptance of treasures report for November thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Twelve-point-three, resolution number twenty-dash-one-one-two, a resolution authorizing payment in the amount of $10,374,625 due on February one, twenty-twenty-one to the Bank of the, of New York Mellon, Dallas, Texas, for the general obligation refunding bond series twenty-fourteen. Twelve-point-four, resolution number twenty-dash-one-one-three, authorizing the executive director to execute the listed joint grassland venture leases with terms beginning March one, twenty-twenty-one on eight parcels containing approximately 269.67 plus or minus acres. Boone Creek to Tom Burning at $25 per acre. Coral Woods to Dan Looney and Candace, Candance Kling at $37 per acre. Goose Lake to Phillips Shanks at $25 per acre. Lind Woods to Tyler Nichols at forty-nine point, $49.10 per acre. Marengo Ridge to Cody Book at $50 per acre. Pleasant Valley to Cody Book at $52 per acre. Winding Creek to Ty Nichols at $61 per acre. And Winding Creek Bailey Woods to Philip Shanks at $25 per acre.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Hunning?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Approval of bills payable for the month, October twenty-twenty. Does anybody have any bills they'd like to pull for the audit?
Well, of course I do. I'm trying to wait.
We're counting on you, Dave.
But I, vendor I seven-six-seventy, IWI Motor Parts for $626.51. Vendor N five-eight-three-six, NAC Pro for $140.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I do Ultra Strobe, so you, you sixty-five oh-six, Ultra Strobe Communications,
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And each of you been getting a report on those whenever you bring them up or they, we've been, everything's been fine, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, Treasurer Cook, thirteen-point-one B, if you could do that motion, please.
Hope my voice is up to the task. So thirteen-one B, a motion to approve the payment to conserve FS as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the period ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And I'll continue. Thirteen-one C, a motion to approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of bills.
I'm sorry, but I think we have to vote on thirteen-point-one B because John's a member of FS.
Right.
Yes.
That's fine. I would, I would just take them the, the seconds separately, Dave, and brought them up separately, but that's fine. But that, that's fine. You're, you're correct. So we'll, we'll, I'll take a second for thirteen-one B. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. Roll call, please.
Sorry. Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
And Trustee Hunning?
And I'll abstain. Motion carries six, four, and one abstention. Now, Bill, if you could give me thirteen-one C.
Okay, a motion to approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
And Trustee Hunning?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, thirteen.
Motion to consider the agricultural lease terms and rates beginning March first, twenty-twenty-one, resolution twenty-dash-one-fourteen, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the listed agricultural leases with terms beginning March one, twenty-twenty-one on nineteen parcels containing approximately 1,736 plus minus acres. Broken down as Coral Woods, twenty-three-point-seven-five plus minus acres to Ray Heinberg at point four-two-oh-eight percent. Pleasant Valley, thirty-six-point-six plus minus acres to Paul and John Bacaletta at point four-five-seven-six percent. Beck's Woods, nineteen-point-seven plus minus acres to Don Smith at point two-four-five-zero percent. Queen Anne, two-hundred-and-forty-three-point-five plus minus acres to Tom Hanson at point three-one-two-zero percent. Klumpkin, fifty-two-point-six acres plus minus to Jim and Rita Henning at point two percent. Pleasant Valley, one-hundred-and-twenty-three-point-five plus minus acres to Mark Epperson at point three-nine-eight-one percent. Winding Creek, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five to one-hundred-and-nine-point-four. I don't quite understand that. Plus minus acres to James Bigelow at point three-two-five-seven. Can somebody clarify that? Is that?
It was just supposed to be Winding Creek at one-oh-nine-point-four acres to James Bigelow at point three-two-five-seven. That, that's the field number, B-A-W-one-one-two-five. That's the field number.
Thanks for helping me out there.
Bill, I could also add that we're moving away from calling these parcels by the last owner's name. So eventually, all you'll get is that field number in future.
That'll shorten this.
It certainly will.
Well, the other thing I'll add to this is I don't think the decimal point is the right place on any of these. Because if you read it, point three-nine-eight-one percent of, say, the Mark Epperson one, that's less than one percent. It should be thirty, thirty-nine-point-eight-one percent, I believe.
Yeah, I think you're right.
If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do the point three-nine-eight-one, then there shouldn't be a percent behind it. It should either be the decimal or it should be, or it should, or not have the, the decimal should either be thirty-nine-point-eight-one, say, on the Mark Epperson one, or it should not, because we're not running any of these for less than one percent. And when you put the decimal that where it's at, it's incorrect.
Good catch, John.
Yeah. I believe that's right. It's, it's, it's an error in the decimal point.
So everyone should be, should, as he finishes this out, everyone should realize that the decimal point should be moved over two spots. So anyway, go ahead and finish.
Okay, so I think we're at Brookdale.
Yep.
A hundred-and-thirty-nine-point-one plus minus acres to Dan and Ryan Sass at forty-three-point-seven percent.
Perfect.
Queen Anne, one-hundred-and-nineteen-point-six plus minus acres to Tom Hanson at thirty-five-point-five percent. Kishawaki Corridor, one-hundred-and-one-point-nine plus minus acres to John or Ella Martin at twenty-five-point-five-four percent. Kishawaki Corridor, twenty-nine-point-two-four plus minus acres to Anthony and Benjamin Martin at twenty-eight-point-oh-three percent. Brookdale, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine acres to Gary, Jim, and Michelle Harp at forty-four-point-seven-eight percent. Hollows, sixty-five-point-five-four plus minus acres to Randy Gasecki at thirty-four-point-seven-nine percent. Brookdale, forty-two-point-seven-four plus minus acres to Dennis Wilkineen at forty-two-point-seven-four percent. Brookdale, twenty-point-five acres to Dennis Wilkineen at thirty-five-point-four percent. Kishawaki Corridor, one-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-four-one plus minus acres to Ron and Steve Pierce at thirty-point-one-one percent. Kishawaki Corridor, forty-six-point-seven plus minus acres to Anthony and Benjamin Martin at twenty-seven-point-five-three percent. Coral Woods on eleven-point-seven-four plus minus acres to Joe Henning at thirty-two percent. And Queen Anne, sixty-point-two acres to Tom Hanson at twenty-three percent.
Hey, do I have a second?
I will, Dave.
Dave, thank you, Dave. So motion made. Second, anybody have any discussion? Okay, if not, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
I'll abstain. I have a brother and a father-in-law both on the list. All abstain at this point with a motion carrying six and one abstention. Thank you. All right, um, that brings us to carbon credits. Ed, it sounds like you've done some work on this.
I have, um, see if I can get the, uh, I need screen sharing up.
Okay, do it now. You're good.
Okay, thanks. Let's make sure if everyone can see the, uh, PowerPoint before I move on.
Yipper.
Looks good.
So we had a brief presentation on carbon credits in general, I believe, at the, uh, October meeting. And I, uh, was directed to do some follow-up and get a little bit more detailed information about whether there's some applicability through the district for the use of carbon offset credits in the future. So I have done some, some more detailed work on it. And I will do that presentation tonight and let you know when I have found out. So there are two potential markets that the district could actually uh, tap into, into, in the future if we were to move into the carbon market. Carbon offset market. The first is regulatory. Uh, this is not required at the federal level at this point. So this would be where the federal or state government actually mandates some type of carbon reduction, either for individuals or businesses or both. Uh, that is not the case right now, although some states or groups of states are using a regulatory carbon system where they're planning for using them in the near future. California in particular is one of the states that has already adopted, uh, regulating carbon. This really isn't a viable option for the district at this time because there isn't a mandate for carbon reduction, uh, through a regulatory process. But that could occur in the future. The new administration in Washington has indicated that moving back into the Paris agreements and, uh, carbon reduction is going to be a large part of their efforts in the coming four years. So this may change in, uh, the near future. The second is the voluntary market. And this exists at really two major levels. The first is, uh, there are individuals who wish to voluntary lower their own or their family's carbon footprint. And I went through some of the processes, uh, for my own carbon footprint with transportation to try to better understand how this process would work. Basically, most of the carbon, uh, brokers where you can buy carbon offset credits have, uh, an application on their websites where they allow you to put some information in about either your business, um, or your individual life or your family's life in relationship to how you produce carbon. And then we'll come up with an offset. Um, I happen to pick the forestry offset because that's the most applicable one to the district. So to offset the amount of carbon that I am producing as a family, thirty point five tons per year for my transportation, I would need to plant four hundred and thirty six trees uh, to get that carbon offset. So if I were to pay through one of their programs, that would cost me about three hundred and sixty six dollars per year. So that's kind of how they calculate the voluntary end of it. Uh, probably a bigger part of that market is business interests which are desiring to be carbon neutral or to lower their existing carbon footprint for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's, uh, it's done because they truly believe in the, in the issues related to climate change. Other times businesses realize that, um, it's a good business practice, uh, in terms of their markets, depending on what that business is, and they want to be able to use that in, uh, in their advertising, their outreach to say that they're working on their carbon footprint. This particular option could present some opportunity for the district in the short term. So of these two potential markets, the voluntary one at this time is probably the one that holds um, any kind of promise for us as an agency utilizing it in the future. What I did try to identify here were, were the major components in a carbon project, were we to try to, to put one together? And I would be the first to tell you that there, there are many other components, but these are some of the major ones that we would need to consider as an agency. Uh, one is the identified project area that would be dedicated to a carbon project would be dedicated either permanently or for a very long period of time. And when I say that, I mean decades. So if, uh, we're utilizing an area for voluntary carbon reduction, typically it's a forty year or more lifespan. If it's regulatory, it could be as much as a hundred years. So the amount of time that that project area is going to be dedicated to the carbon project is, uh, is pretty long reaching. So we would have to make that consideration in selecting one. Um, credits have to be certified and there are several carbon credit certification programs, different formulas that are used. Uh, for example, if we were to use, uh, the forestry approach where we're planting trees or preserving trees uh, to produce carbon offset credits, uh, it would require a pre-inventory of the existing vegetation um, prior to be able to sell that via a third party in order to, um, to make sure that that project would meet standards. So there is a certification process that goes through the, each one of the, the credits that you would, uh, credit projects that you would put together. Similarly, each year that project has to be monitored, um, to for a couple of reasons. One, to see if the trees that you planted are still alive and therefore still sequestering carbon. But more importantly, uh, there is a measurement process that is used with the growth pattern of those trees that will allow you to calculate how much new carbon has been sequestered in that growing season that could be for sale the next year. So one of the good things I discovered is this isn't one and done. If, for example, we have a tree project on ten acres, those, those ten acres are sellable each year based on the amount of new carbon they've sequestered in the year prior to that. So that is, that is an important component that, uh, of the projects. They, they, uh, they have a long lifespan in terms of sales. A separate financial tracking has to be established for those sales, similar to what we have to do with mitigation banking. Uh, they certainly will require a marketing plan in order to be able to solve the credits. Uh, and a determine has to be made on how we would get into such a program. There really are three major ways to do that. One is to contract with a carbon broker who is actually doing most of the marketing and, and taking care of the certifications and, and the monitoring. We could partner with an NGO, either our own in terms of the foundation or another one. Um, or we could, we could attempt to create in-house a carbon program and manage it ourself. And finally, the project has to be large enough to be a viable purchase option for either regulatory or voluntary markets. And the figures I got from both California and the East Coast, I've been in conversations with a couple of carbon brokers on both ends of the country, uh, is the preferences for projects in the five thousand acre range, if it's woodlands, and in the five to ten thousand acre range, if it's grasslands. And that might seem as though it would, it would eliminate the district, but I'll, I'll talk a little bit later on how those kind of goals might be achieved if we decided to, to go forward with it. So, uh, just some thoughts about in-house management versing versus contracting with a carbon broker. Uh, there are advantages if, uh, if we do go with a carbon broker. Uh, we remove the burden of designing the carbon program from the ground up, uh, in-house, and that is a complicated process. It would increase our market reach. Since this is a business, the brokers are interested in selling. That's how they make a profit. So they're, they're out looking for, uh, carbon offset, um, clients. Uh, and it places the monitoring and certification issues onto the broker. If they are, if the area isn't certified as a monitor, they can't sell. They don't make money. The disadvantage is that obviously is going to result in less income to the district from the sale of those offset credits because um, there will be a middleman taking their share. It would require staff management of the carbon program with a third party. So we would have to have a very close liaison and working relationship with their carbon broker. And most of them require a yearly fee on, on top of the shares that they're taking from the carbon sale. So those are some considerations if we were to use a carbon broker. So really, what I discovered is there's two potential areas where we could utilize carbon offset credits for the district if we decide to move forward either now or sometime in the future. And they basically fall into two categories. One is land management, one is land protection. So in land management, we are, we're trapping atmospheric carbon by producing new biomass and by utilizing the soil itself. So what would fall into this category is the existing programs we have to do reforestation, to do prairie and to do wetland restorations. Each of those natural communities can sequester carbon. Um, each one is a little bit different in terms of how much and where it actually sequesters it, but all of them could be used. We also can utilize the farm conservation measures that we have, the permanent grass for waterways and the border strips. Uh, they would also qualify for, uh, carbon sequestration. So there is a, a potential for using, uh, programs we already have in place as part of a carbon offset market. The other areas in land protection, and this prevents existing land cover that is already sequestering carbon and has sequestered carbon in the past from having that carbon released by either plowing or tree removal. So if you consider grassland communities, uh, that carbon is sequestered in the soil through the, the bot- through the, the process of the biomass, the grass and the Forbes moving it into the soil, uh, if that's plowed up, that carbon is released. Uh, if you have a mature forest or a semi-mature forest, it's sequestering carbon as it grows. If those trees are removed for development, then that carbon is released back into the atmosphere. So this could, at some point, given the right project, uh, actually allow us to utilize, um, carbon offset credits uh, going forward to recoup the cost of land preservation projects. Now, where this has been used with some success uh, is in the new emerging grassland market, which is mostly centered in the western states right now with ranchers. So there has been some success with carbon offset credits used to purchase conservation easements on ranch lands that continue to be working ranches. Uh, but there is an agreement that that grass is not going to be plowed up. So um, that, that, the money garnered from those offset credits goes to the ranchers and goes to the brokers handling that. So we have two, two good possibilities going forward. I did some very crude, and I want to stress the word crude preliminary cost benefits scenarios because there's an awful lot that goes into, uh, calculating this kind of thing. And I only did it for, um, planting savanna and woodlands, which is two activities we typically do now. So we have good, we have good knowledge of how many trees per acre we plant. We have good knowledge of how much it costs us per acre to put those trees in the ground. Really, the cost for replanting grasslands is much higher and the offset return is much lower. Uh, and, and I'll use it as an example. If we plant, uh, a savanna, um, we use approximately a hundred and ninety four trees per acre to do that. And those hundred and ninety four trees will produce, they will sequester about almost five tons of carbon per acre per year. If we go to woodland, which has a higher density, we, we typically plant four hundred and thirty some trees per acre. That'll sequester about almost eleven tons per acre per year. When we start to move to grasslands, we need to have four acres of grassland to sequester one ton of carbon. So the payback on grasslands really is not lucrative enough for the district to even entertain it, uh, at this point. So what I did here is I used, uh, carbon offset prices per ton. Right now, twelve dollars is about the max that they're going for. But I also played out some scenarios going forward where those prices would increase. Um, we utilized, uh, what that income would be per acre, given the, the sequestering rate, our planting cost, uh, for the hundred and ninety four trees and four hundred and thirty six trees. Uh, gain-loss first year, gain-loss first decade, second decade, third decade going on. And what you can see is that initially, um, it takes time to get the payback for the planting. But as those, uh, as those years were on, you start to move into the positive level in terms of return. And one thing I really want to stress here because I, I'm not able to put it into this kind of equation simply because I don't know what the rates would be. But the brokers I talked to all stressed the fact that as these plantings mature, the amount of sequestered carbon per acre goes up dramatically. So we're looking at almost five tons per acre per year in the beginning for these tree plantings. By the time they hit twenty five years old, that could be double or triple. And that goes back to why they have to be monitored each year to see what the growth patterns are and how, and how that equates out to carbon per acre. So, you know, the good news is, well, the bad news, if you want to look at, is it takes a long time for return. The good news is that that return does move into the positive range at some point uh, and continues to be in that positive range as, as long as that planting is sequestering carbon. This also has applicability if we're doing land protection projects because we start with, uh, a forest that's preserved, for example, um, say we, the district preserves fifty acres worth of oaks. It already has a carbon sequestration rate that, uh, is, is working and is in existence. And once it's measured, we start with whatever that rate happens to be. So there's applicability in both categories and, uh, I will move finally to my last slide, which is I think we have some future directions here. And, uh, I, I put these out for discussion and direction and just, uh, you know, general ideas. But there are some things we can do going forward. We're probably not ready to get into a carbon market at this point, especially with the changes that are likely to come in the first year of a new administration in Washington. Uh, but this, I don't think this is a proposition we should put to bed because I do believe it has some potential going forward. And whether that's a year or two or five from now, um, these markets are going to just keep expanding. So I think going forward, we should continue to monitor the development of the carbon market and what the new administration is suggesting and what passes Congress and what becomes law and what doesn't become law. Because those changes could create a, a much larger and a more lucrative market going forward. Um, currently, we're involved with the Morton Arboretum and Chicago Wilderness and some other partners to try to determine if we can bundle partner carbon projects together in what's called a carbon cooperative. So this would be the Forest Preservation and Conservation Districts in the Morton and other partners putting together a number of smaller projects that would allow us to get to that, that acreage level that is attractive to carbon brokers in the carbon market. Now, right now, there's no, we haven't reached a conclusion on that, and those meetings are occurring. And, and I think it would be prudent for the district to continue to be part of that process in the next year or so. We could explore adding a voluntary carbon footprint reduction, and you see in parentheses, non-certified. Because we don't want to get into the cost of certification at this point. But we could add a voluntary carbon footprint reduction to the big woods and the big prairie donation programs we have with the foundation, which right now fund much of the tree planting we do. And it would simply be a philanthropic option in these programs. So what we would be able to say is if you donate to these programs, now do you plant trees, but it helps tie up X amount of carbon per acre. Um, so we can sort of get people used to the fact that at a future date, there might actually be a carbon market. And it's just another reason why people willing to donate for trees might feel good about donating for trees and donate more. Uh, I would like to continue having discussions with, uh, the carbon brokers that I have made contact with and perhaps some others because this is a very complex market and, uh, I'm really at just the beginning of understanding its potential. And it is evolving very quickly. So I think, uh, being on the, on, in, in contact with those who are actually involved in the market right now uh, would be useful for us if, if we decide to pivot and go into it in the future. And my final suggestion is, uh, I think we should assign one of the staff members in natural resources to actually look into what the monitoring requirements would be for these carbon projects. Depending on what they are, we may have the in-house capacity to do the yearly monitoring ourself, and it would be an important part of uh, meeting str- one of the strategic plan goals, uh, which is developing alternative revenue sources. So it's right in line with what we have already, uh, talked about as a district for our next three-year strategic plan. So to kind of sum it up, there is, uh, there are some legs there, or should I say roots? Uh, it's, it's possible going forward. Um, this could, this could be, I won't say a large moneymaker for the conservation district, but it could be a source of continual funds. The thing to bear in mind is that we're doing these kinds of projects anyway. And if we can work into that process, um, some way to, to take, uh, carbon offset funds for doing them. some way to to take carbon offset funds for doing them. At the very least, it might help fund those types of projects going forward. So I am done with that. Thank you very much, Ed. Very good. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Fred?
I don't really have a question, but I really do like as a starting point, the thing about the offsetting your own personal carbon through the foundation. I think that would be a fun way to get people to understand how this process works. And kind of, you know, I donated this much money. I've kind of offset this much of my own carbon footprint. And so because the carbon market is 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 really complicated.
Yes. And I frankly, I was kind of, if you get a chance to go online and actually use one of the calculators and all you have to do is type in carbon offset credits and you'll get to one of a dozen websites and they all have a different calculator. It's it's really pretty fascinating. You don't realize how much carbon you're actually producing just by getting your groceries. And the other good news was it was it was kind of encouraging to know that really, it didn't cost that much money per year to offset it. And I think that that's why the the voluntary market is actually in pretty good shape. I mean, there are people that are using it. They will use it for individual airline trips where you can offset your airline trip for 20 bucks all the way to, you know, I'm going to offset my entire family's carbon footprint for a year. So it's interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Ed, thank you. I enjoyed it. I've learned a lot. Perhaps we could hear from you in a year or at some regular interval and you can keep us updated.
But certainly, I certainly do that, Bill, especially as things evolve in the new administration with carbon.
Are you finding any certain broker that's more helpful than another as to helping you size this or or look for opportunities in in projects that we're doing or are are? I mean, are they pretty interested or are they just giving you facts and letting it go at that?
Well, I don't speak Californiaese. So I had a really good conversations with the brokers in the east. It speak more Midwestern and they were very helpful with information. They they were also very interested in working with the district if that's the direction we go. And I believe part of that, of course, is a business interest. But the information I got was very clear and very good. And I was, I did tell them that I would follow up with them going forward in the future to kind of discuss what what the district had available and and kind of understand better how they could market that.
Well, my my point was is quite often if somebody, if these brokers, of course, are making money every time they can sell the offset or the whatever the product they're they're selling, if they see an opportunity that we could, we could provide a lot of this or provide some of this, they they would be, I would think, giving us some kind of a help to get us started so so that they could make some money also. And you know, so it sometimes if if they don't show any interest, it means they don't really think they've got a chance to for anything to really happen here or make any money. But if they're following up and saying, hey, if you do this, this and this, we could make make it happen. So that's that's I was trying to gauge their their sense or their try to get a sense of what their, how much their interest is is in this.
Yeah, that that's a good point, John. And and one of the brokers has called me back three times. So they are interested.
You know, if they if they give you two minutes and hang up on you, you know, there's not much of a chance there. If they're calling you back three, four times and they're they're thinking there's at least opportunity there. And and so, yeah, that I'd be interested in any follow-up you have. And yeah, I I hope somebody can keep can the more we learn about this, the better the opportunity is for for the district. So thank you very much.
I will keep on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
You need anything else, someone said?
If that, if those follow-ups are okay with everyone, I'll I'll just go in that direction.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to Elizabeth. You have strategic plan, key performance indicators.
I do. And do you see that up on your screen?
Yes.
First, I got to say, Elizabeth, when you first presented this to us, a blank sheet, I kind of got the sweats and the chills at the same time. So I want to congratulate everybody for coming and fight figuring out those those measurable items. I thought it was a Herculean effort. So thank everyone that did that.
Well, I definitely thank you. It was a it was a team effort and really the first time for us having to sharpen our pencil and to really think. And I know our brains hurt and trying to get everybody to kind of understand what the vision was and to to work through it. But everybody rolled up their sleeves. And I too am very proud of what we accomplished. Tonight, as I go through these, what I'm going to be looking for, obviously, we've set our pillars. We've got our priorities that we have built our work plan around and really what we're trying to identify with our key performance indicators is the measurement of success and the target that by the cumulative efforts of all the work that we're doing as an agency, certain areas that we want to highlight and so that we can see how we're making progress with the work. Strategy is more than just busy work and checking it off a list. Some things are quantitative that can be measured. Other areas are qualitative. And as you'll see in some of these areas, we may not have all of the specific metrics, you know, one of the KPIs is to develop that baseline and then work from there. So all good with that. I'm going to go ahead and see if I can share moving through here of where we're at. So our target dates, when we look at the KPIs, they each have a measurement, either, as I said, qualitative or quantitative. There is an actual start date and that's our baseline. That's where we were at the end of fiscal year 2020. So that's March 31st, 2020. This strategic plan kicked off April 1st, 2020. And it will sunset on March 31st, 2023, and that is our target date. So the dates, as you read through this, that is what we are aiming to get to. There are a few of them where we've extended beyond 2023 just to showcase where there may be a little bit longer runway that's necessary to achieve what we're trying to do. And then the data source, which will go through each of these KPIs as we simplify with actual and target numbers. There are layers and layers of data source information or calculations that are required to get to the numbers that we are measuring. And in your board packet, you did receive almost in four different colors of an Excel sheet where it did provide some background information of what those data sources were and what we were measuring. And of course, as I report out, our intention is this would be an annual report to the board, not a quarterly report. We would do it at the end of the fourth quarter of each year and you'd see the progress that is being made. So under our water, we had the four priorities. And then under the KPIs, we were working on the various, and I just lost my screen here. Are you guys good? Did you lose it?
No, you're advancing though.
Okay, my screen just went. So I don't know what happened. I can't, technical difficulty here. Hold on. Okay, we're back. So the areas, what we're measuring on the KPIs is acres of created restored wetlands, acres of infiltration, increased water storage capacity, our water quality and our condition of water recreation areas. So we have four KPIs in this category. Just to be brief here, and and these may be difficult to see on the size of your screen, but it is included. So for our water of restored wetlands, we're looking at moving from the 2,400 acres to 2,625 acres. Acres of infiltration, the ones on the dots that have the question marks, work needs to be done. But here we are looking at what we do know. And so the acres of infiltration, there is definitely more work that needs to be done on that metric. On water quality, we know that the county's done groundwater monitoring wells on our properties and they have more that are off our properties. And so one of the first tasks that was on the strategic plan is to identify what's being measured. And so that we know that there's 16 chemicals and six physical properties. And we also know that we recently installed a bioreactor at our Queen Anne macro site. So what we need to identify or what are additional data do we need to know to be successful in this area? And then on the water, condition of water recreation areas, we went through a process here in trying to identify really what the condition is of all our properties and created a five-point metric to see where our position is as of today, using various areas in each of those to determine. And of the 17 areas for water recreational access that were evaluated, we can establish a baseline of how many properties are outstanding to all the way down to a property that is must be repaired or cannot be repaired. And so really what we're trying to aim here is to move our properties along the continuum and move out of the at least satisfactory and above. That would be the goal of a condition of standard for maintaining our water recreation areas. Any questions on those? Then when we go to our land, our land also, we've got our four priorities that were deemed important. And then we move into what our KPIs were. And as acres of conservation land protected, acres of restored natural habitat, our conditions of our conservation areas, and then our condition of our regional trails. With these, we know our baseline of acreage preserved at that 25,606. And so we don't have an actual goal here, but knowing that it is in our plan and as funds and resources become available, then that number, of course, would increase. In regards to restored natural acres, we did have identified 500 acres that would be put into restoration. And so this demonstrates we currently have 12,192 acres that have been restored and then adding that additional 500 by 2023 to give us a total of 12,900, 692. Then same as we did for the water recreation areas, we've got the the sites that are users that join us at our public access areas and then properties, our regional trail system, and we measured this as well. So again, in this area, looking to have properties that are satisfactory or above and happy to report on this that we feel that our properties are overall through our assessment in in pretty good shape. But there are areas for improvement. And and you can see on the condition on the conservation areas, we've got some that are in the poor condition and another area that cannot be repaired and replaced. And what we align with this, when we looked at this, and I have to credit Amy and Perry for really doing a deep dive in this area, it clearly showed the projects that are coming forward as capital repairs and replacements that have been identified in our camp program. All of this aligns together. So that's the good news, as it should. But as we went through this metric, it it shows that. Any questions on those metrics? How does the board feel as far as working towards a goal of satisfactory or above is is a good place to be on our conditions?
I don't understand the question.
Well, that we're looking that we want to move, you know, as we look and assess our properties, that we at least want to 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 move to a satisfactory or above level on our sites. So that areas that are poor or cannot be repaired, you know, I guess a decision would have to be made on that, but we're trying to move things to get our standard to be satisfactory or above.
I think that makes sense.
I think that's I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. I guess you're always looking to have each each location be at least satisfactory. And nobody likes to have anything that's that's not.
And so this is probably really hard to see, but I just I put this up as an example of, you know, how we are able to look at this too from the work that was done by Amy and Perry is they evaluated each area. And then we have regions to which we operate under our sites and fleet team. And then we have our planning areas that are done as per as our comprehensive plan. And so from this, we can also take a look at how we're servicing different areas of the community. Our repairs and our efforts of, you know, but we don't have an area, for example, of the county that isn't getting the resources or repairs. You know, obviously, some areas may have older infrastructure than others, but again, it's a great tool for us to be able to look at and evaluate it from that lens as well. Then we get to our community and here we've got four priorities that we've identified. And then when we look at our pillars or KPIs, we've got awareness of the essential value that conservation has on our community health and well-being, participation and engagement of site users, partners and volunteers and staff, looking at our professionals prepared for the future and then access for all. So on these, again, a variety of graphs that are shown, but under our community of the essential value, we've got our ratings from the most recent community-wide survey that we did and that we had a seven out of 10 rating. And so we know that as a baseline. We also then, on some of these areas, we know under COVID, where we were with site user audiences that were visiting our sites. And we can take a look at where we were with COVID. Our numbers have just grown amazingly for those that are out on our sites and and then looking at where we would be come 2023, and we expect that trend to stay to stay to that level. Will they stay at the COVID level? We can only hope. But we're not sure. We've had some amazing times as people get back into their their workplaces, et cetera. And then a variety of initiatives is to build new partnerships and to increase the number of or how their programs are presented with that health and wellness component. In regards to participation, engagement of site users, every registration, also we take enrollment numbers, our volunteer numbers. And then we can see how what our baseline is and what we'd like to grow to. And again, we've had an odd year on programs with COVID and not being able to offer programs or limiting the number of people that can participate in our programs. But we anticipate by 2023, bringing that to pre-COVID, back to where we were before this year occurred. And then when we take a look at our social media stats, and I think there's some interesting numbers here before we even began down the investment road of of our social media, our engagement and impact numbers have grown just phenomenally. But keeping those numbers to have those grow even greater, I mean, we've reached a great number. It's now really maintaining those numbers and then getting the growth will be smaller increments. But again, a great job's been been done there. When we take a look at our professionals prepared for the future, we are currently doing a baseline survey so we can assess where our staff are and and take all of this to create a baseline and then we'll be coming back. But ideally, we would like to, again, have our workforce prepared. You know, are they outstandingly prepared for future limited, moderate to limited? And the goal would be to to improve those stats as we go out for the year. And so those will be determined as far as exact what metrics that'll come back. And then the same thing with our access for all, our diversity, equity and inclusion initiative is is really what this one's about. It's it's our outreach and the number of programs that we're offering. You know, our outreach in in publications that we're reaching in diverse audiences such as using our web translator. I think it was in the last Wiki wow of how that translates for access, how we're able to use social media and already that has a translator in itself. So we're reaching those audiences and probes and then how to eliminate, you know, if there's any barriers, what we're going to reduce those. So those metrics will be set up as we go forward. Any questions on those?
No, I think that professional prep for the future, that was a tough one. That was a tough one.
Yeah, that one is. And you can measure for a variety of areas. And I think it's it's going to be different for different positions, but obviously a commitment that we retain the talent and and we're investing in our team. And then on the stewardship, we've got four priorities that were identified with our KPIs. We're looking at revenue generation, operating costs, support by our elected or appointed officials, technology access, and then philanthropic support. So on these, what we're looking at from revenue, and again, the discussions that we've been having for many years and this year too, is the ability to take our property tax levy because we have not had that. And you know, that's a really important to not only taking care of the operating expenses that the district has been challenged with growing expenses and With growing expenses and and not having that. So this shows that it also shows our revenue growth in our programs leases and licenses. To grow by three percent by twenty twenty-three. On our operating costs, what we're looking is a percentage of our personnel cost total to our operating revenues. And so at twenty twenty, we're about seventy-five percent and looking to a not to exceed of around eighty percent. And we know that percentage of personnel is directly tied to the amount of revenue that we're bringing in. So of course, when our revenue has not been growing because of property taxes and your expenses grow, that percentage grows. The the other item on our expenditures would be to look at a plan to balance our general operating budget. We're all non-capital operating expenses are funded from the current general fund operating by fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So again, we'll have more discussions on this and how we look with a plan to put this together and have discussions with the board. But that is what we're looking at for a metric for sustainability. And then any questions on those? And then the last one I have up here before I change the slide is our philanthropic support. So looking for increased annual support of this past year in twenty twenty, about a hundred thousand dollars that transferred over. And in twenty twenty-three, looking to a target to be three hundred thousand that transfers over to the conservation district.
Very good.
And then looking at our elected officials of where we're at. And we did a baseline here and I appreciate all the trustees going through the exercise to see how everybody. Was doing towards support of how we are interacting and and access to and knowledge. And so the baseline though that I used for this and what I had passed out was what I felt where the district was. And relationships through my knowledge and communication. I think in this area, you know, we are well received, but looking at the total dollar, the numbers that we got with. The board survey, we've got some work to do on some advocacy. We've got new individuals and physicians. And so, you know, that is something for us to take on together and to to do that reach. And so we can, we can measure and the goal would be to move up from the limited support to get at least to the moderate support. And ideally, if we can get those champions that are willing to to go to bat for us at that advocate. That's a great place to be, but it takes some work. And then I'd like to propose that we have a a measurement that we're making contacts, you know. Through reach that we're doing, number of contacts, communication meetings, et cetera. And we can track that for the board and then the work that I do as myself. And then as far as our technology, the goal here was access. And so replacement of our hardware and software, basically to keep that at the same level that we currently are. We've got about a five-year replacement on hardware, three years on software. And so if we can maintain that, that would be great. Thank goodness, we had those investments in place with COVID because it allowed us to pivot with great ease. You know, backup is something that's key, so the reliability and and would like to move that with a shift from a seventy-five percent to a ninety-five percent. Again, we back up, but we have to go back and make sure. And so it would be nice to have better reliability in that camp. And then access and remote connectivity, moving our our speed so that we're more efficient. Cybersecurity and positive phishing test response rate. Again, this has been something we've been very focused on with training our team to keep our system safe. And avoid any type of hijacking and ransom and clicking on something that costs us a lot of money. So by being proactive and and keeping that rate up is really important for us. So to get that to a hundred percent and then to get our phishing, it can't be always a hundred percent, but at least a ninety-nine percent. We're doing real good in that camp. So again, those are what we propose for metrics for the next three years.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah, I for one say, I think that's a tremendous job of, you know, it's hard to car, I can't say the word right. Come compartmentalize, you know, put everything into little sections and then have it linear and and supportive. And I feel like that's a lot of information, but a great job of organizing it and making it make sense. And each pillar is supported by, you know, the goals and the and the data sources and measuring and 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 giving us an idea of how to move forward. So I know it was a lot of work and so I appreciate it. It's a lot to consider.
So tonight, you know, I was not looking for necessarily approval. There's time to still look at it, but obviously setting these and and we'll continue to refine. But if there was something that, you know, something else that the board felt that we should be measuring that we didn't capture. You know, that would be important to share with us as well.
Anyone else have a comment or question? Hey, I don't see any at this point in time we're here, any. So we've gone through that. Now you kind of you went into your led, you went into a little bit of your outreach to elected officials or was that not part of that? Are you doing legislative and outreach next now again, Elizabeth or you through us?
Yeah, just briefly. So we do have a meeting. President Hennigan and I have made contact with Chairman Bueller. And we will be meeting on Monday afternoon with him just to make introductions. And we're very much looking forward to that. Letters did go out, as you know, to our elected officials and we've gotten some good response. So again, we're well on our way. And and once after we meet with Chairman Bueller, I think it would be great to, once we get the lay of the land, to begin meeting with our new county board members. And so they get familiar with us because we are going to be in front of them in and not too soon, you know, in February and March. So we've got our work cut out for us.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
Okay.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
We're going to move on to committee assignments then. All right, it's going to bring us to. We're going to go to Lynn on the Fox River ecosystem.
Sorry. Yes, so December was just their holiday gathering. I I did was not able to attend that. And I mentioned last time, it was just, I I think they were just getting together to talk about things that they're doing in their own personal spaces. To help with sustainability and promoting wildlife in their backyards. In January, we will be having a presentation on waters of the United States. As rollbacks happened at the federal level and what that impact has meant. At, oh, no, actually, I'm sorry. Wait a second. No, no, that's right. I'm mixing up with that with green drinks. So it's the Waters of the United States, what the local impact has been to the rollbacks at the federal level. We'll be having, I think Joanna Coletti will be getting on and there's somebody from Kane County who'll be talking about local ordinances and how and what's going on there. And then I think that's really about it for prep at this point.
Okay, thank you. Kish?
Kish, I have nothing to report, but John, I'm going to have to ask you. Till we get this squared, when you get notification of a meeting, will you send it to me just in case? I'm I'm sure.
I'm what's that now, Dave?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm getting notifications of a meeting, so. He gets them to forward them to me so I can keep up.
Okay. Yes, I will. I will make sure that that happens.
Thanks, John.
Okay, Chicago Wilderness, Elizabeth?
So a lot of great work is going around a variety of goals. So the only thing I will state is our next executive council meeting will be in January after the first of the year. There are new board members that are joining us. And if any board member here or anyone else would like to get information or be on the list, we're happy to add you. So you can can join us. Those meetings are by Zoom. There's a lot of resources on the Chicago Wilderness website, so that may be of interest and and we can get you signed up for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Pat, anything with Farm Bureau?
I had a meeting a week ago, Wednesday. Talked about the annual, they had the annual meeting and of course, that's the first one they ever had via Zoom. Poor participation compared to normal. The other thing we talked about was living snow fence. They had some of that last year. That's where farmers would leave their corn or beans along county roads, active snow fences. And didn't go over too well this year because I think the county, they thought, didn't get on it right away. So going to see if they can start planning that in June of next year. That's all I have.
Hey, thanks. Dave and Elizabeth are on the next.
Yeah, well, coming up is the Illinois Association of Park District's meeting in January. Elizabeth, I don't have the date, but what Pat just said is I I always went because it was the people I would meet. And some of the sessions I would take and then the luncheon or they recognize park district people. And being Zoom, you know, I'm not as enthusiastic. I have to be honest with you. Elizabeth, what's the date?
It is the end. I believe it's the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth of January.
Okay.
Elizabeth, I have a question. What it makes?
Well, I think we lost you.
Yeah.
Frozen.
I can't see Bill, so as.
I can see him. He's just frozen, John. He's so something happened. He's just frozen.
Okay, um, why don't we move on to to Linda with her report? And then we'll come back to Bill when we get him to for his question. So Linda, can you do?
Sure, absolutely. Yep, we had a Zoom meeting on December eighth. The foundation went through their audit and so they did that. They are working on this fiftieth anniversary book and speaking of that, not speaking of that, but speaking of that. Maybe a lot of you got a call asking for a contribution to that book. But besides that, they're also asking for annual giving. And just. Just as a. Point of reference as July first, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth. The McHenry County, our board was fifty-seven percent in giving. And from July first, twenty twenty to December seventh, twenty twenty, we're only at twenty-nine percent in giving to the annual. Annual giving. So I I think they would like us to have a bigger number than that and they're not asking for a certain amount. They just would like to see a hundred percent of us trustees give. Now again, they stressed not the amount, but the gift. So if if you are so inspired to give a gift to the foundation, that would be great. I'm sure they would appreciate it. Again, I'm not talking about the book because I'm sure many of you have gotten a call from them. I'm talking about just their annual giving.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Yep, so just going forward, they did, we they went through their audit, which was good. Came up with all their meetings for the following year, which was great. There's going to be art displayed in the visitor's center in the Overlook Room at Lost Valley Visitor Center in March. And they're working on that as well. And then Chief King also presented what the hunting program and the positive effects. That it has already had, which was really good to hear. So that was, that was exciting for me to hear that it is working. And they said they've had some glitches, but not major ones, but it's really going. It saved a lot of time for their for their officers. And I think that's really exciting. They wouldn't have known how to even implement the hunting program during COVID if this wasn't in place. So I think that was, although I was hesitant, it was well worth it. So I think that's about it unless somebody else has anything that I I forgot.
Any questions for Linda? Comments?
And I do hope the board members, we do get to a hundred percent. I would really encourage that myself too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Bill back with us?
Yes, I see him. I don't see his video.
He should, he's just coming in now.
Hey, welcome back, Bill.
Yeah, tech, a technical problem.
Do you still remember your question?
Well, I wanted to ask Elizabeth if, I'm sorry that you, if you've just waited for me. Could Jackie attend that IAPD virtual meeting to particularly the sessions on diversity, equity and inclusion?
Yes, so opportunities, what we do with conferences, I send stuff out and, you know, individuals of teams that want to participate, those options are available. And the conference offers a variety of sessions and so you can get different sessions. The the key thing this year with being virtual is you're not limited to one time. Because you'll get access to all the sessions for thirty days, so it's a great educational, great investment.
It would seem to be a natural. Opportunity for her to perhaps take advantage of and see if the IAPD offers anything in this area. Thanks.
That's a good point, Bill. Okay, anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on to Lynn, you're up next.
Yeah, nothing really to report there. I think Elizabeth forwarded their newsletter for December. So you may have had a chance to read that through that. No meetings are scheduled really at this point as far as the broader group. They had an executive committee, I think, Council of Mayors met as well. So nothing really at this point that I know of for the larger group.
Okay, how about Green Drinks?
Green Drinks, they had their holiday gathering and which was the. A bartender from the Marriott in Chicago came in and and talked about their green practices for bartending. In January, we're having Jennifer Garland. She is the recycling coordinator coming in from Kane County. She is very popular, very knowledgeable in what can and cannot be recycled, also in terms of organics. So she'll be on that you, that's the first Wednesday of every month and that's at six o'clock. If you you do have to register, register in advance, but Green Drinks has a website that you can.
How do I register? Who do I go to?
I think if you go, if you, if you're not on the Green Drinks mailing list, you can, you can kind of go through the defender's website.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Sure. And that's.
Thank you. Elizabeth, on the shared investment study.
Okay, so the news that came out of the shared investment is if I sent something out in an email. But Shaylen Daigle, who is the executive director of McCock, has been hired in a capacity with to work with the county. On being the coordinator for shared services. And right away, I I did leverage her expertise to reach out to our other local municipalities on that fuel. System and fleet and she was able to get something out to everybody right away and and pull that data and not only to share it with us. But extend that out to the other municipalities. So we're really excited to have her in that role and someone that can lead. And of course, she's been working with us collaboratively all along. So that is one of the outcomes from that study. And then the Algonquin, that group has not been meeting due to COVID, so.
Okay, Matt, John?
Yeah, nothing to report. There was no meeting.
Okay, and Elizabeth, we're back to you for a visit McHenry County.
So really no report shop local strategic planning will occur after January. So really no report, shop local, strategic planning will occur after January.
Anyone else have any other outreach contacts they've had? Okay. That brings us to public comments too. Is there anyone out there that's, would like to make a comment?
I don't see anything.
Okay, thank you. Then I would take a motion to go into an executive session. We will come back to this after the executive session.
I move to go into executive session pursuant to C21 and to C5 of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Bill. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes. Okay, we'll move into executive session and we'll start that when everybody gets there.
Okay.
Hey, a question. Where do I find the address to get back on there?
Go to your email, your embassy email. Megan said the link. So you just click on that link. Takes you right to it.
Send it to you again if you need it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
And we're recording.
Okay. Is everybody here? I guess that's why we do a roll call. Go, go ahead and do a roll call. We'll see who isn't here.
Okay. Trustee Dom?
Here.
Trustee Brant?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Hennig?
I'm here. We're all present. So.
I would like to move to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
A second.
Bill? All right, Bill. And we can have a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
I had Hennig twice on here. Sorry, guys.
All right, that's all right.
Did I miss?
So we're, we're fine.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Is that everybody now?
So.
Okay. I must've got your vote on that, Dave.
Sorry about that.
You can speak for me anytime, John.
Anyway, so we're fine. All right.
Happy holidays, everybody. Happy New Year.
Oh, we'll see you Tuesday.
And everybody remember to turn in your shirt orders, please, if you have not done so already.
All right, commemorative, commandment of air for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. See you Tuesday, folks.
Tuesday will be there. Bye. Bye.